I'd like to call to order the November 5th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. In front of you, you have the minutes from our October 22nd meeting. And when you had a chance to look at them, if I could get someone to motion to approve those minutes. Hazel, second. Katrina, all those in favor? Any abstentions? Okay, so we have one abstention. Thank you very much. Moving on to review and approval of the agenda. We have one item to add to tonight's agenda under action items. And it will be a motion to approve a $36,425.57 donation for the fall sports coaches from the New Canaan, the All Sports Booster Club. If I could get a motion to amend the agenda tonight? Brendan, second. Penny, all those in favor? It's unanimous. And then if I could get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Katrina, second. Jen, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition. And the first item on our agenda is the Staff Utilization and Enrollment Report with Mr. Cass.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to thank you again for this opportunity to present information about our district staffing and enrollment for this year and future years. In order to do this meaningfully, we compile a considerable amount of data from a variety of sources into four reports. It should be noted that all of these reports are posted on our website under Board Presentations. So let me talk about these four reports a bit. The first, and all of these reports are in your yellow folders. The yellow folder near your place?
Yeah.
The first report is the memorandum, this one here, that analyzes information reports provided by our demographer based on past, present, and projected enrollment in the New Canaan Public Schools. Also included are the demographer's charts and graphs showing New Canaan's historical enrollment and projected enrollment. The staff utilization enrollment report, the blue, the blue report, is a comprehensive look at certified staffing for the 18-19 school year. This report includes summary enrollment data, staffing data with FTEs at all levels, including section, class size for each grade, faculty leadership positions, administration, and summary totals. It has many uses as a source of information and serves as a standard reference for us throughout the year. And all of these numbers are a snapshot of what our district was like on October 1. There's also a separate staff utilization report for non-certified, the yellow, the yellow copy. This contains all of the data for non-certified staff numbers at each of the schools. There's a smaller staple report called a supplementary analysis. So that provides additional perspectives on the data in the staff utilization and enrollment report. An FTE comparison of this year with last year at each level and by department. And a look at which classes may be under the district guidelines, which classes might be over, and a look at enrollment in special education programs. I'd like to thank the entire human resources staff, particularly Lisa Abrams and Lynn Reese, who helped compile the data for these reports. All the principals and their staff, including principals sitting right here, there's a couple of them right here. And in addition, Alan, Lizette, Darlene Pienza, Carol Pacala, Bill Tesber, Lenore Dweck, and Paul Gallo here at the high school, for verifying all the information contained in these reports. They did an amazing job. This review could not have happened without their support. And we're here after to answer any questions you might have. So because the data is presented from several different perspectives, including the different levels of the system, specific grades, core and encore subjects, classes and sections, it's rather voluminous. My presentation tonight will focus on a review of the current student enrollment, the educator staffing levels, and our demographer's enrollment projections. Hopefully, by focusing on these three areas tonight, you'll have a clear snapshot of where we were statistically on October 1st, 2018. And you may also have a sense of where we might be headed in the future. As with any presentation, the data provided in the reports is quite detailed. And our report today only provides an overview of this data. So let's get a school, district perspective first. This slide is an enrollment snapshot of the entire district. At 4,113 K through 12 students, this represents a decrease of 69 students over last year. This decrease, the majority, 38, was at the elementary level. And in kindergarten, particularly, there are 43 less students in kindergarten. We have about 71 students less than our demographer's projection from last year. Not included in these numbers you see up here are pre-K, which saw an increase from 41 students to 46 students. If you take a look at over the last six years, we have decreased enrollment by 27 students over this past six-year period. When we add to the K-12 enrollment, this slide, the pre-K program and students who are outplace, you arrive at the total district enrollment of 4,170 students compared to 4,237, or 67 less than last year's overall total. And by the way, these numbers do not include students that are attending our launch program. So now we can take a look at each level. At the elementary level, the K-4 enrollment is 1,494 students. Overall, the elementary decreased by 38 students less than last year, which put us about 44 under the projection. Overall, it was kindergarten where the projections were the, were much lower. We had a previous year of 276 students in kindergarten. And now we came in at 233, 43 students down from the previous year. We can take a look at each elementary school, taking a look at their enrollment. East, year over year, showed a decrease of only one student. South, a decrease of 24. And West shows 13 fewer students than last year. The monitoring of enrollment at this level is important as we move forward. We currently have 27 classroom sections at East School, 27 sections at South, and West has 24 sections in the building, including pre-K. We have reduced a total of four sections from last year. Four sections down from last year at the elementary level, going from 81 to 77 sections overall. At the, at Saks Middle School, the enrollment had an increase this year from 1331 to 1334, an increase of three students this year at Saks. NASDAQ projects enrollment decrease next year at Saks to 1312, down 22 students. The demographer projects the enrollment at Saks to decrease to 1,312 students in the 1920 school year and 1,294 in the 2021 school year, as we look a couple of years out. Even with some minor projected decreases, Saks will remain, according to the demographer, in the upper 1,250 range over the next three to four years. At the high school, New Canaan High School's enrollment peaked at 1348 during the 2010-11 school year. This year, it is at 1,285 and has projected increase next year, according to NASDAQ, by 24 students. So an increase at the, in the projection for, for the high school. New Canaan High School's enrollment will begin increasing again to an anticipated 1,316 students during the 22-23 school year. A 31-student increase. Special education student population has increased slightly this year to a number of move-ins from last year into today. This gives us a prevalence rate of 11.2% as compared to 10.8% last year. Out of district placements are at 11 this year, down from 14 last year. And the specific information can be found in the supplementary, the supplementary analysis of the staff utilization and enrollment report. Now let's take a look at some enrollment and class size guidelines. This chart shows that for this year, the percentage of classes overall in the district that are at or below the board guidelines is very high. As shown on page one of the staff utilization and enrollment report, the class size guidelines for K through three are 16 to 20 students. Shown here is that on the elementary level, the percent of classes at or below the guidelines is 98%. The guidelines for grades four through eight are 20 to 24 students per class. Saks typically has a small percentage of classes over guidelines and many sections under the guidelines due to the structure of the team program, as well as math placements. This chart shows Saks at 98% within class size guidelines. And for the high school, grades nine through 12, the guidelines are 14 to 25 students per section. The percentage of guide, the percentage over the guidelines was 3.8% two years ago, 7.4% last year, and about 6% this year. So about 94% of the classes here at the high school are within class size guidelines. Overall, the percentage of classes at or below the guidelines has remained well over 90% on average and has been relatively consistent over the past five years. So now we turn to staffing levels. As you can see, the number of certified staff decreased by 5.8 FTEs compared to last year. So let me talk about where those, where those reductions came from. What I did was I broke out here for this slide, the staffing levels at each school, so you could compare year to year. East School, even with a steady enrollment, decreased 1.5 FTEs. At South, decrease of 2.2. And at West, a decrease of .9 staff. Many of these numbers came from the reduction of class, classes as a result of enrollment. A total of four at the elementary level. At the secondary level, Saks decreased 2.9 FTE positions, and the high school increased by half a position, .5, a half a position. Special education, there was a slight increase due to enrollment of 1.2 FTE increase over last year. So if we switch back to enrollment projections, kind of summary, some summary data to look at some of the demographer's projections for next year. The projection of the demographer estimates that the district as a whole will decrease in enrollment by 49 students overall, from 4,113 to 4,064. That's K-12. Examined by level, they projected decrease of 51 students at the elementary level. And we're talking again K-12, not pre-K. At the secondary level, the demographer projects a decrease in enrollment of 20 students at Saks next year, from 1334 to 1312. At the same time, they expect the high school to increase 24 students to 1309 from 1,285 this year. So those are the highlights. Overall, according to our demographer, we're in a period of stable enrollment. And as we look out a few years, even though we're fairly stable, there is a slightly decrease in enrollment projected for next year at the middle and elementary levels, while the high school is looking like it'll continue to grow. So again, I'd like to thank all of our HR staff and all of the principals and support staff that helped this report and putting together all these reports. This review could not have happened without their amazing support. So we're all here today to answer questions you have about enrollment, staffing, projections. Happy to open it up to all of you.
Thank you, Gary. And thank you to your staff and, and all the people that assisted you in putting, this is a lot of data and a lot of work. So thank you very much to everyone for helping out with these reports. Let me open up the questions. Sherri?
Yes, Gary, thank you. This is a very comprehensive report. I know it's a lot of work to complete this every year. I'm curious about the kindergarten enrollment. And obviously, we had a significant reduction year over year. 43, down 43 students is significant. But I'm curious more about the projections going forward, because now they're carrying, so we, I mean, we haven't been this low in kindergarten in over 10 years. I mean, it's always been in the, you know, 270s, 280s, up to 300, contracting down to 233. But now they're projecting that to stay at around that level going forward. So I'm just curious if they have insight into, because again, that was a significant reduction. So they're, they're saying that they don't believe that was a one-off? And just any insights that they have on?
Yeah, what the demographer says, and I included his in the enrollment projection memo, I included the demographer's look and view on the birth to kindergarten relationship. And so there's always been, and the reason he's projecting that is, you know, a lower birth rate over, over the course of the years. And he's still projecting that again for next year. So it's really tied to births in the community. It's also tied to, to, to the real estate. He, the demographer also looks at real estate. And one of the things that he, he wrote was, you know, where if you look back to, you know, home sales, he ties a lot of our projections to the birth rate and to home sales. He, he wrote, you know, through 2018, through August 31st this year, only 149 homes sold, 149. He goes back in time. And, you know, 2004, 379 homes were sold. And 2007, 298 homes. '09, right after the recession, 177 homes. So now we're talking through the first half of this year, only 149 homes. Now it seems like it may be shifting slightly, but that's how he links the enrollment. And he tied kindergarten to, to a lot of the birth and home sale data.
I guess my question is, we've always looked at those factors. So we've always looked at birth rates and real estate and so forth. So did, did the demographer miss those signs a year ago? I mean?
He, he attributes the drop this year to the low number of move-ins, move-ins. That's how he kind of focuses, and he ties that. There were fewer move-ins because fewer, fewer, fewer home sales.
You know, Carrie, so, but I guess the question I would have is I look at that chart, and you see the 2000, I guess the dates are longer, but it looks pretty, the, the births look, you know, pretty consistent from 2012 through 2018. But we have a, a pretty significant drop in the K enrollment.
Yes.
And so you're not having fewer births in this community, or not significantly fewer births, but you're having significantly fewer enrollments. And I guess my question, have we looked at the private schools and said, you know, are we getting fewer kids going into the public school as well? I mean, I, we, we also have to look at the home sales. But are we getting a bigger, with the economy getting better, are we getting more kids going to private school than we traditionally did in the last five years or so?
Yeah, I think it would be a great analysis. A few years ago, if you remember, we, we actually polled every pre-K facility around to just try to get a better handle on it. Now, that effort, seems like we need to repeat that in these coming years to get a better handle on, on these, on these projections, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I, anyway. Penny?
I'd be, I would love to know what the results of that analysis are, if we do it, just because I know when we looked at it before, it was interesting. When we had the economic downturn, we thought we might have a bunch of students move back into the public schools. And what really happened, it was just some moved back, but then a number of students moved from public school to the spots that were open in the private schools. So if the, if the private schools in the area aren't increasing their enrollment, I mean, it'd be interesting to know just historically from them, if they're at capacity, if any of them have increased the number of students that they're taking that would draw from this area.
This is, you know, as Gary shared, I mean, this is the hardest number to predict, as we know. If you look at the chart, that's the ratio of birth to enrollment, right? That's, that's what, what makes it so difficult. In the last, the last couple of years, in 13, 14, 15, you see the significant difference of the births, which are around 150, and then the enrollments, which are about 300, right? So what he, what they do when they're developing these projections is they'll look back three, five years, and they'll look at that gap. So it's the number of births, and then five years later, the enrollment in kindergarten. And they come up with a ratio. And so as they were looking at that significant difference between the number of births and the enrollment historically, and that became a trend over those three years, so that influenced the numbers going into this year. He may be, they may be over-correcting, you know, as they look at it. But really, what they talk about primarily is, is the number of move-ins to the town. You know, so if you have this many births, then they, they make an assumption based on your history around the number of move-ins that you'll have. And they do, they do, as Gary mentioned, look at housing data and some sales and the pace of sales and things like that. And, in doing that, to some degree, but it is mostly a mathematical formula that you look in the ratio there between those births and then the five-year later enrollment that comes in. So we can certainly, you know, chat with the private schools, look at their enrollments and look at their numbers. But typically, I think this ratio is driven by what they call the net move-ins from the time of the births to the actual enrollment in kindergarten. And it's really mostly driven by housing sales. So it's families that are moving in that aren't accounted for.
Tom?
I was wondering if our demographer had access to kindergarten enrollment in districts in Lower Fairfield County? Has he taken a look at other districts and done a comparison?
Yeah, he does. You know, NASDAQ probably does the, the majority of the projections around, around the state. Now, I, they're not shared with me, but I know that he, he is looking at it for many of our neighboring districts. And, and he's also looking at this kind of slight decrease. He sees that happening in many, in many of, in many of the school districts. And this really hasn't hit us before.
Hazel?
I wondered, I'm sure the demographers are thinking about it and seeing, but we have some large projects, housing projects that are being built, that is somewhat of a new thing to be happening in New Canaan. And the ones that have been built seem to be full. Are they full of children? I don't know. But there certainly are, it seems to me, there are three major ones that I can think of. And perhaps, but I, if you think he's already investigated these?
I think he has, but you, you know, as we kind of move forward, you know, that's the move-in data that we'll, we'll be looking at, that we look at year, year, year to year.
Sherri?
So Gary, just to follow on to Tom's question, is we've talked before about NASDAQ doing the peer review, and they've always come back to us in saying that we actually typically don't follow other Connecticut or national trends. In fact, you know, 10 years ago, when schools were declining enrollment, we were increasing enrollment. I'd be curious actually to get the perspective, if we're more now in line? Again, back to Tom's point, is just where, you know, again, I mean, just year over year, that was a significant reduction in kindergarten and off- that was a significant reduction in kindergarten and off kind of the track of, you know, the formula with looking at birth rates and move-ins.
Yes.
And so it would just be curious for future planning to know, you know, the peer.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that would be worth taking a look and to Tom's point, I certainly can call around to my colleagues to see what the trends are in our neighboring districts just to have it on balance.
And I just had one more question about pre-K. So that increase from 41 to 46, and is that due to an increase in enrollment in students who need to be in that program or is that, are we allowing more enrollments of other students or how?
It's a good question. Dirk, can you help me with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
The increase of the, was it five or six students?
Five.
Were all unanticipated move-ins.
Okay.
And they're all identified children.
Brendan?
Yeah, can you just give us a bit of a sense as to how you, how often kind of teachers or certified staff get moved around just based on needs and numbers at various levels? I know that just from experience, there seems to be a lot and you kind of have to, you know, think on your feet a little bit, I'm sure at the beginning of the year, but can you just talk a little bit about how that works and how you work with the staff?
Dr. Crenti, if you don't mind, the work, because most of it is at the elementary levels across the three schools and the balance of the specials, staffing and things.
Right.
This year was particularly challenging because we had so many of those classes that were right at the breaking point of needing to add new sections. So we were trying to balance all of that and Dr. Crenti?
So everything's driven by the class guidelines and so at any time, we may need to move a teacher that is at one school, elementary school, over to another elementary school. All of our teachers are certified K through sixth grade, so they can move within the school district and they can move within grade levels. Some teachers ask for transfers when they come up for whatever reason. Sometimes it just gives them an opportunity to have a change. Sometimes it works better for their commute if they head over to one of the different elementary schools that are on a different start time and end time. So it usually works out in the long run, but we're meeting pretty much every two weeks starting in June, right up to August. Usually we make a cutoff at the middle of August, right before those placement letters go out, and that's when we kind of put out all of our deciding factors about how many sections at each of the grade levels. The special areas will be working right up to, right before school starts, trying to balance that all off and making sure that we have the right amount of PE teachers or music teachers or art teachers to cover all of the sections at each of the elementary schools. So this year, we had several of our special area people who were traveling to south last year, from west to south. This year, they're traveling to east, and so it's just a shift. And so they understand that, that they're hired to work in the district, they're happy to have a job and they're happy to move from place to place. The curriculum is the same and that's what makes it so fluid for them. And even when we do transfer a classroom teacher, we try to make sure that it's at that same grade level so that they're already used to one curriculum and they move over and they're still teaching that same curriculum.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. If we could go to the special education numbers and I guess it just kind of ties in with sort of the question that Sherry asked about the pre-K, but then I look at sort of the overall percentage and, you know, I guess this is probably my fifth year on the board and I can't remember if, you know, we were probably closer to 9% a few years ago and now we're kind of touching a little above 11%. And then I look at sort of the last page of the, what report am I on? I can't remember what report. Well, there's a, one of the reports has the special education prevalence information in it and it has page number, it says number eight on my iPad. It's the small, it's the supplementary analysis. There we go, I got it, came to me. So the last page of the supplementary analysis?
Yep.
Okay. And if I look at that, if I, thank you. If I look at that report, you know, the elementary schools look, you know, more in line with where we've been historically, but it looks as if we get up in the ages of the kids, the identification rate seems to tick up and I, and you know, so, and it's peaking in 12th grade. So I just wanted to sort of get a sense, I mean, I kind of couple this with our budget numbers where we're seeing some additional expenses this year and I just, I think we should get a better sense of what's going on with these numbers and the uptick.
So this information is no new news to us and certainly I share your questions and there has been some dialogue actually across the three elementaries around kind of the equality of the rate and looking at systems that are in place for identification of children. You write about the fact that it does seem that there's an uptick at the middle school and we're continuing to look at intervention processes prior to identification in special education, see if there's anything that we can do to refine those systems. I do think the numbers at the middle school, I mean, at the high school have moved into progression from the middle school. So it's pretty consistently been that way, that numbers are higher at the middle school and then move into the high school and as material becomes more difficult and more complicated, we are identifying a small number of students on that level, but certainly the middle school is something that we've been focusing on in conversations and we are up about a percent in general, so, but we look at that relatively routinely.
Dirk, just a quick question. So the 12th grade number, I would imagine includes the students that are in the launch program?
It does.
Which really spans all of the years, you know, from the 18th to 21st. So that's actually a combination of those several grades. And I would just add that this is, it's mirroring a statewide trend. Just even on Friday, I was at a meeting with superintendents and this is something that we were talking about. The state numbers are still significantly higher than our identification rate, but it is something that regionally and statewide, we're seeing, you know, an increase in the identification rates. And it's a conversation that we've all been engaged in for a little while about sort of cause and what we can do. But still, the state rate at, across the board is really bordering on 20%. So I think we're still doing a very good job as far as remediating and using our RTI program to help our students get back on track without having to go through the full continuum of services to be identified, but it's something that we do continue to talk about when we keep a focused...
And typically I do prepare a chart during the budget season that gives the comparative analysis that Brian was just referring to with other districts, so you'll be able to see the, kind of based on the October 1st numbers in every other, October 15th numbers in, October 1st, sorry, numbers in other districts will compare to our like districts and you'll see the percentage rates.
Great. And then two more questions. First is, Gary, and I don't know if you have it tonight, but if we could get, you know, what are the percentage of classes in particularly SACS that are below guidelines? So if we could get that.
That is in the, I believe it's in the supplemental, is that in there?
So it is, it's page five and it's supplemental.
Oh, okay, perfect.
And just at a quick glance, it looks like the, the majority of the classes that are under are in the art and the PE area, which I would imagine is likely driven mostly by scheduling as they sort of work into the rotation, what have you. But, so of the, you know, 132, 80 of those are art and PE, as you'll see on page five. And then a few others, Gary, you mentioned in the presentation, driven by math placements, can do that, right? And then what classes do you have there? David, if you have anything to add, you're certainly welcome to.
Okay. And then the only other question I had, and I gotta, sorry, I was doing my, the, I believe it's in the, let me see, I think it's in the staff utilization and enrollment report, but I gotta find, I gotta pull it up online because I was writing my notes on that page. Hold on. Where is it? Staff utilization, certified, is that it? I think that's it. Yeah. Let me go back to it again. Sorry, I said the...
So we talked about page five?
Yeah, so, yep. So on, yes, on page five of the staff utilization and enrollment report, there's an analysis of the elementary special areas and, you know, it, on the left side is the FTEs on, by school, and then on the right is a analysis by year of the FTEs. And I just, I, the West School 2018 FTEs stood out to me and if you could kind of give us a little...
So the additional point two is under the health. So we have Christine Orlando and Mike Tisha, so that would increase that special area because those are the total numbers for the art, music and phys ed, and we probably should make sure that slash health is there now in the future. So that would increase from a point three to the point five. And then when we have special area...
And that's only at West?
No, it would have increased at the other elementary schools as well, but there are other special area people. What is happening is if there's a special area person who's traveling over to east or west and it happens to be less than point one, it's just calculated over at West. So for example, we have an art teacher that travels to both south and to east, but it's less than point one at east and less than point one at south. So it's just kept at West. It's just easy for calculations when you're dealing with...
Okay.
So it's accurate FTEs, but it's...
No, that's fine. It just... But that's why the number sometimes looks slightly off, but it has to do with...
Good question. I think it's, if you read the totals, the totals being consistent, probably tell the story better than anything.
Right, right.
That we were at 11.4 last year, 11.3 this year in our totals, and that includes the addition of the health FTEs. So we are still down overall, you know, if you factor in that health part.
Right.
But it is, the way that they're moved, and it has to do with Brendan's question earlier about staff and, you know, how they're placed, but it really is masterful, you know, how the, how the staff are shared. And as Jill mentioned, it's really to their credit because they are willing and able and really often positive about the opportunity to go to another building, meet some new students and people and what have you. So it's a good partnership that we have with the special area folks.
And I guess the only question or comment I have, because it's sort of a consistent thing that I've seen over the years, is as I look at sort of the higher level math and AP classes, those tend to be the highest enrollment classes in the district, in the high school. And I get it at some level, but I also, you know, would, you know, like to see that we work to have those, you know, advanced level classes be within guidelines as often as possible because it just seems to be, as many years as I've been on the board now, those tend to be the biggest classes in the district and often go over guidelines. So, it's just a comment. Any other questions? Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Oh, Penny?
Sorry, sorry. So in terms of the special ed students, just anecdotally, is there any trend that you're noticing in terms of the different types of issues that are being diagnosed and that we're dealing with that have been growing in the district or shifting?
No, I really, I think in terms of looking at the different classifications, the largest continues to be learning disabled and that will probably continue to be the case. It has been for several years. Our autism population is maintaining itself, not increasing dramatically, and those are really the two populations of most impact in terms of expense and variability, so.
And then just as a follow-up question on the SACS number of classes, I know, I know that's because of the team structure and trying to get different students at the, you know, right levels for math. Is the, having 216 classes under guidelines just about where we typically are? Is that typical year for us?
It's been pretty consistent at SACS year to year.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, it is primarily driven, really because you have to add the columns up across of those 216, you know, the vast majority are the art and the PE because of the specials rotations.
Right.
You know, as you look across there. So you do have some, you know, you have the, you know, in each of the teams, but if you take those out, you're looking at a very different number. Fifty-four, well, about, yeah, about 80 across the four grades, so maybe an average of 20 per grade.
It's like 15%.
Well, I think that team structure has really served the students well at SACS and keeping it in place from year to year and providing that type of, you know, smaller grouping for when we have the largest middle school in the state is a really good way to go.
Great.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Gary. Sorry, we got a last minute. Okay. Moving on to the K through 12 health curriculum update with Mr. Adams.
I feel like I don't need to introduce Jonathan. I think we all know him quite well. Jonathan, I'm proud of how you got up and walked to the podium. Jonathan ran the New York Marathon yesterday.
Wow.
Fabulous.
Trying to lead by example.
And you got out of the chair without help.
Yes.
Well done.
I was trying to strategize on how I was going to present. I like to present standing up and I was concerned that since I really can't feel my legs right now, that maybe I should sit.
Right next door.
Sitting too long and presenting, then I might not be able to stand up, so I didn't want to embarrass myself. So I'm going to stand and I might make some weird movements with my hips, but it's okay. It's just trying to keep my legs awake. But I am excited to present to you again for another health education update, which really is an exciting journey that we're on this year as we've started to roll out at the third and fourth grade levels. I do first also want to thank Sarah Baross and Mary Hannah, coordinators here tonight. Sarah was kind enough to drive me here also as carpool, God bless her heart. And Christine Orlando and Mike Tissue, the health teachers who are also rolling this out at the elementary schools, so. So what I'd like to start with is really just some of the ways, just a quick overview of the presentation in terms of how we are accomplishing the next steps. The last time I presented to you was in April of last year where I ended the presentation on what those next steps are and how they're aligned to the district goals. And up on the screen there, you do see that these are our district goals that we have and the ones highlighted are the ones that I'm going to touch upon tonight within the presentation. So you'll see that we had some next steps in order to develop the units with a plan to implement. And right now, we are currently at West School implementing grades three and four and also rolling out the new unit that I presented back in April to you in fifth grade. We're currently on lesson seven of 10, so we're not fully complete yet at West School, but we are in the middle of it and happy to present to you where we are. We are also working with other teachers at the elementary schools, especially currently right now at West, in order to develop some blended experiences that I think the presentation will show a little bit in conversations that I'm having with the third and fourth grade teachers as well as the special teachers because, you know, when we leave West School, we do have a goal that our work that we're doing there doesn't just be forgotten about. So we're seeing a ways to keep it alive throughout the school year. We're continuing to address state mandates throughout the health curriculum and we are working to ensure that all of our work is going to be transparent to parents in the community, but also teachers within those buildings, and you'll see some of the strategies that we're using right now currently. So without that, this is, again, goes back to our vision that we have, which I know you are very familiar with, and I think that the next time I come and present, we might have a quiz that I'll give you just to make sure that we are recognizing this, but we do have a vision and it is an important... But we do have a vision, and it is an important one, that our students will be equipped with the skills necessary to improve their health literacy, fostering the capability to make informed decisions in order to lead a healthy lifestyle. It's truly skill acquisition. And we know this, and I really just share with this you again, just because the research really examining health education programs knows that a skill development program is a key element. And it really is important in the way that we foster and educate the whole child. Skills build health. This year is one of the ways that we are kind of branding the work that we're doing, K-12 within our health program. So, that's kind of a little tagline there in terms of skills build health. And we know the definition of, I shared with you last April, too, Shape America, which is our national organization. And I believe that you were aware of some of the work that was happening on social media that I've been involved in. But some of the work that we've done has kind of hit some national attention. And there was an article that was just published. And there is another journal article that I just want to share with you. This is the Journal of Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. And this was in my mailbox actually just at the beginning of last week. And I opened it up, and on page two is our, what would be called Shape America's success story, the work that we're doing within our schools, rolling out elementary health education. I wasn't aware that it was going, going to be in this article. I knew it was going to be in one or in this journal. So, it was kind of fitting and also timely that this was shared with you over the summer, but also kind of just published out nationally now, too. And it's exciting work that I can't thank enough, the work that our health team is doing and that our district is supporting within this great work. So, health literacy, basically the ability to use that vision board and the ability for students to access and understand, appraise, apply, and advocate for health information, and really to be able to use that for their own health, but also within the health of others. That's one of the overall primary focuses as we build a skills-based program, trying to increase and improve health literacy. Just a quick statistic that I presented, which I'll get to in some of the parent work, in the parent workshop that I was, that I gave back in October, that according to the National Assessment of Adult Literacy, only 12% of adults have sufficient health literacy. So, we can conclude that adults today are lacking the skills necessary to improve their health literacy. So, when you connect that statistic, that brings us back to our vision board about developing a skills-based program in order to improve students' health literacy, because we would not want our students today to be a part of that statistic later on in life. So, we know that, and we can conclude, that improving health literacy in schools can dramatically improve those statistics as they get older. Health and happiness. Quote that I read recently, "The happiness of your life depends upon the quality of your thoughts." And one of the things that I put on the front of your presentation is an orange post-it note. And that post-it note actually goes to some of the work that, and the research connected to that Dr. Lussi actually presented a conversation about two years ago on positive psychology and the happiness advantage. And we really connected with that to a great deal. And really, what I'd like you to do just for a moment is invite you to take that orange post-it note and to jot something down that brings you some happiness. Could be anything within your life, anything within your work on that post-it note. You don't need to write your name on it or, or anything along those lines, but anything that brings you happiness. I'll know you're done when your pencil's down and your eyes are on me. It'd be just a quick, and something quick, and an idea that we had, that really Mike and Christine kind of are, are owning right now, and it's, it's thriving within our fifth grade population, is that last year, they started a quick little entry ticket in order to do that with their students. And they came out, the, the students came up with such really just endearing and, and awesome little statements that they were like, "How can we figure out a way to kind of display this?" And, you know, so, we got the orange post-it notes. And you could see that, you know, they, we started to put them on the wall. And as the year kind of went on, and this would happen every class, we knew at the end of the year, we would have an entire full wall of just happiness and, and positive statements that our, that our students came up with. So, given that, we also see just a few examples of what some students have written. So, walking outside on a pleasant warm day, also looking at the leaves change color. Happiness is when friends and other people say hi to me. The smell of fresh sugar cookies on Christmas Eve. I see my cousins every year. They are younger than me, but something's even better when I see them every year. Walking to school with smiles from your teachers. And then, having someone invite you to sit with them at lunch. So, as we kind of look at this, this now is currently, as they've kind of transitioned into two new classrooms, the start of this year's kind of happiness wall. And it's going to continue to grow, as you can imagine, throughout the year as there's going to be a lot of orange post-it notes. But with this and sharing this, just this positive news, as well as the news of grabbing some national attention that we are, that we're having, I, I think it can show that, you know, we're making strides in the right direction. We are on the right path for our students and for the work that we're doing within health education. So, what is happening in third and fourth grade? Last year in April, I, or not last year, but just in April, I shared with you some of the things that we were planning on doing on the unit that we developed on decision-making and personal safety. Some of the things that you'll see here are just the standard of decision-making states that students will demonstrate the ability to use decision-making skills in order to enhance their health. And then, we break that down more specifically to a specific content here within personal safety. So, here you see some of our essential questions, really just why does safety matter? How can we learn to keep ourselves safe? How do our decisions are really going to impact the safety that I have, whether I'm put in a safe or an unsafe situation? And we've also worked with some of the elementary coordinators about a, a book or a text that, that would have a character be faced with a tough decision that, that we start reading with the students and kind of go along with, you know, kind of like a cliffhanger, but we don't really tell them what's about to happen. So, then we have to kind of work in that lens of the character to see what decision that they would make throughout the story. And then, we move on throughout it. But one of the pieces that we've received, and I'll go back a little bit more detail about, about the unit plan, is that we were welcomed, you know, with open arms at West School by Jan Murphy and Ashley Fanari, as they quickly on our, on our first week there, included us in their, in their daily bulletin, made an announcement and welcoming us. Teachers, administration have been nothing but open arms to the work that we're doing there, which has been really nice. Some of the pictures here will just show students in action, both teachers in action with them. We are currently teaching in the Library Media Center. So, if you can observe that both lessons are happening within that space during that same time. And one of the things that I've started to share out with teachers, once our lessons are completed, so, what I mean is, in a six-day rotation, we would basically be able to complete that lesson. And at the end of that, I've been sending out a newsletter to all teachers and staff within West School that shows basically a blurb about what happened, some pictures and highlights of what students are doing in their work, and then really what's to come. This is just a way that teachers can start to continue to be up to, up to speed and aware of that work, but also see how they can reinforce that work within their own classes. And I've already seen some of that in action, just within some of the third and fourth grade classes and the communication that they're having with their students in terms of just the decision-making that they, that they're developing as they line up in the hallway, right? Are we making good decisions? Are you, if they have some time for some guided discovery in the classroom, are you making a good decision about where to go and sit and so on? So, they're, they're starting to tie in just a little bit of some of that terminology that we're, that we're using also. So, a piece that I can actually just quickly share with you is a, is an update. I'll just read with you because you can't really read that one up there. But, so this one would say, "What happened? During lesson four, students were introduced to the Great Decision Making Model. We shared the poster with the class, and we'll be using it as a guide to help students build their skill of decision-making. Learning to identify, avoid, and prevent unsafe situations is an important step towards safety. Students participated in an activity where they identified multiple safety practices that are used in the home, school, and community. As we begin to model the skill of decision-making with the class, they are learning to apply the Great Decision Making Process as it pertains to their safety." Pictures are below, and then what's to come. "Students next week will be analyzing and processing multiple health and safety scenarios. Students will be using the Great Decision Making Process to generate a positive, safe, and healthy outcome. After students generate their outcome, we will be looking for groups to present to the rest of their class." This is something that the teacher would have, because now they can bring that back to their own class. They can even ask the question, "So, what groups presented in health class? What did you present?" And they can start having that conversation. Now, you're seeing students actually communicate the work and the learning that took place. And, you know, that, that could also be looked at, another health skill of advocating, right? How are they advocating for their own skills that they are developing within their teachers and their peers? So, this here also was kind of shared with you, but that there is kind of an updated poster that, that we developed that is now in all the third and fourth grade classrooms. Poster size, so just another way and another strategy that we're looking to reinforce that. And on the right there are the steps of how we present that skill to the students in the class. So, again, as I mentioned back in April, too, these steps here are how we will acquire that health skill. And it takes some time. It takes some modeling and feedback and reinforcement throughout that. So, you'll see this process actually take place over the course of the lessons, getting to the overall concept of seeing how they can demonstrate coming to a healthy and safe decision through those outcomes. So, here, now, I have to give this, this credit to the creative genius of Monica Fitzgerald and Tim Stella, music teacher and PE teacher over at West School. I've been working with Tim, being within the health and PE department, and really kind of talking to him in just terms of, you know, how, how can we, you know, blend and embed some of the work within, within the phys ed setting? And that's some of the conversation that him and I are having also. So, not just in the third and fourth grade classes, but how do, how can we bring this to the specials areas? And giving, I don't know if, how well you know Tim's background, but he did have like a DJ background also. So, he's kind of musically talented. And I was thinking of a way, or he was thinking of a way, but then he said, "You know what? Why don't we talk to the music teacher?" And they developed a song about the Great Decision Making Model, which was more than I would have ever expected. And then, Monica was able to get them together in a very short period of time, mind you, to kind of sing the song. And I wanted to kind of share it with you. Now, this does not showcase them, you know, say, making great decisions, but yet this is a way that they're raising awareness and building that advocacy about the decisions that they can make. So, I will just share with you really quickly the song. Music? On?
Probably the best way to do it.
G R E A T, G R E A T, G R E A T, to make a great decision. Review, evaluate, assess, make it over to make it great. G R E A T, G R E A T, G R E A T, to make a great decision.
That is good.
Probably singing that in their twenties.
So, again, too, I really, I, I can't take credit for that song as that is from Tim Stella and Monica Fitzgerald kind of working together, but also kind of just having those conversations with those teachers has then just kind of brought new life to the work that we're doing within health education and, and just seeing ways, again, that we could just reinforce the skill of decision-making with students. And it's, it's really just kind of taken a life of its own in a very short period of time. So, one of the things also on the district goals is that we are meeting state mandates and, that we have, and last year, last April did present to you some of the lessons focused around fifth grade. And we're still focusing on that and within grades three and four. And now, we're rolling out a little bit in grade six also. And the first two there kind of focused on the qualities of healthy relationships and using effective communication and decision-making skills to build those relationships. And then, in sixth grade now, we kind of shifted gears a little bit and focusing a little bit more on building healthy peer relationships. So, again, too, the, the mandate that we do have is really, in essence, around healthy relationships. And we're trying to build that foundation for students because we know that if we start talking and teaching to students at an early age about just really what is a healthy relationship and how they can develop those skills in order to have those within their life, we know that that is the foundation of the work that we're really trying to do. So, some parent workshops. So, in October, we, we're actually really happy to report that we had around eighty-five to ninety parents come between the two presentations that we held at Saks Middle School for third through fifth grade parents, kind of gave them an overview, in-depth overview of the work that we're doing within third through fifth grade. And also, I know we have a new executive director with New Canaan Care, who we worked closely with in the past. And I've met with Ellen, and she's also still teaming up to give some parent workshops as well that kind of complement the work that we're doing in the health class. So, especially those lessons within human growth and development, she's also just kind of having those parent workshops also. So, we're there to, you know, teach the students about that, and then she's there to kind of, you know, work with the parents about how you can communicate with your child as well. Some of the feedback that we received, we did kind of have some positive feedback where, where parents really kind of looked at, at the end of the presentation, third through fifth grade, and kind of was like, "Okay, how can we advocate for more health classes? Like, this is, this is it. Why, why is it done during the quarter and not all year long?" And I was like, "These are great questions, and you should come to my board presentation and before." But i- in all honesty, it was, it was very supportive. And they even, a group of them stayed with us after and really talked to us in detail just about how important they feel like this work is, about really kind of just the lessons that were rolling out. And that even some, we had them do a little bit of a reflection about their own health education experience back when they were in school. And had them reflect on that experience and kind of what they remembered from that. And then, when they started hearing a little bit about the skills-based approach to it, I had one dad at the end of the presentation say, "Where were you forty years ago?" And so, it was, you know, it was really kind of supportive and kind of encouraging also just to kind of feel that support from those parents during that presentation. So, some of the next steps from here that's going to drive us towards the end of this year and are kind of the other two bullet points. You know, we're continuing to draft units of study, K-two now, thinking of that, six-eight as well as nine-twelve. And through developing these units of study, we just recently presented to the CLC, our Curriculum Leadership Council, on an eleventh grade unit that we've developed to receive some feedback on that. So, the curriculum writing is in place, and it's something that is ongoing. And we know that we have a lot of work to do in order to kind of get to the goal that, that we want to. And then, we're also taking a look at and having conversations about current staffing and determining the best models of instruction that are taking place. And these are conversations that are happening. So, we're looking to continue all of these bullets throughout the year and look forward to coming back probably in April and giving you more of a detailed overview of maybe that K-12 look. But today is kind of some of the things that we're doing within that three-five look, just because it's kind of fresh and new in terms of what we just started to implement. And thinking of that students for, in the past, really, did not have formal health education at the elementary school. So, knowing that that's something that, that we're providing them now is a, is a positive and, and good step in the right direction. So, so I thank you again and open it up for some questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. And I just wanted to congratulate you and your team on all the recognition you're getting for the good work that you're doing for the students in the, in the district. So, I appreciate that. And also, I just wanted to comment that, you know, we're all reading so many things about, you know, the risky behavior of the kids in, in our communities. And, you know, I just wanted you to know that in the conversations I have with people in the community, I'm constantly pointing to the work that you and your team are doing to try and help mitigate some of the risks that we're seeing. So, I just want you to know the importance that at least I know a number of us place on what, what you're doing. So, thank you very much. And before I open it up to questions, I just have to ask, because as I was reading the presentation, I, I do not know The Summer My Father Was Ten, that, or the, yeah, The Summer My Father Was Ten, what is that book about?
Oh, so it's a, so it's a great question. So, this is a, a book that was- So this is a book that was-
I'm not sure you'll do it like Glenda Green did it, but-
No. This was, I know, I don't have it with me to read. But it is, it is a book that's kind of written as a flashback, where a father's actually talking to his daughter about the summer he was ten. And through that book, there is a neighbor called Mr. Belavista, who planted and spent so much time on planting this garden that he really valued and admired. And he was an Italian man in the book and didn't speak very good English. And there was a field very close by to his garden where these boys, one being the father in the story, would play baseball. And there was one time that the baseball was hit into the garden, and the father, when he was ten, thought that wouldn't it be cool if I took the tomato instead of the baseball and threw it and saw my friend hit it with the baseball, and it splattered everywhere. So in the lesson, we actually stopped the book right there. And then we go through the process of the Great Decision Making Model, and we see that and we know that this character is faced with a decision. And the kids just went, well, what happens? What happens? But we go through it, and we want to see how they can come to a healthy and safe and positive outcome through that. And then actually, as the story goes on, he winds up taking the tomato and throwing it. And then the boys actually destroy Mr. Belavista's garden. And Mr. Belavista's looking over the boys, and he's like, why? Why did this happen? So then we start to have a conversation and a lesson around that book about what are the consequences that we make within certain decisions that we have? And maybe sometimes, one of the things that I didn't mention that I should is that adults currently throughout the day, just throughout one given day, make about thirty-five thousand decisions, which is sometimes we don't really think about that. But according to, or given that to some children, they make about three thousand decisions a day. So young children, about three thousand, about thirty-five thousand. And a lot of the decisions that we make are automatic, right? They're ones that we don't even have to think about. And there's also some decisions that require some thought for us to really kind of consider some of the things and weigh out some of the options that we have. How can we really quickly evaluate those options? What is the best outcome that we can come to? And that is what the Great Decision Making Model allows us to do. We do know that we're not always going to have that in our back pocket, but the more that we actually prompt students at a young age with some of the decisions that they might consider to be so automatic because of the other influences and the pressures around them that are there, we know that as they foster that skill of decision-making, that it doesn't have to be in their back pocket because it's starting to become common practice. So instead of it being an automatic decision and giving into that influence or that pressure, they can give just a little bit of thought. At that third, fourth grade, fifth grade level, we really just want students to understand that a decision has to be made, that they have to identify that decision. And then we start to process through that, which is really the important piece behind it, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Jonathan Adams? Jen?
So I want to just echo what Deanna said. This work is so important, and we are also grateful that you guys are doing this because, you know, I mean, we have a lot of stuff going on in our world right now, and to have these kids at such a young age learn kindness and to look for happiness and good, and it's just really important, such a good foundation for them. So thank you so much. So this might be like, I don't know if this is right, but like, when do you teach them, like vaping? I know that's, probably they're very young for that, but, you know, I know the whole, like, my kids, when they were super young, were like, ugh, smoking's so disgusting, like, it's because they've learned that, like, for so long. So when is that talked about at this age? Yes?
So currently, right now, within our eighth grade curriculum, which is really around drug awareness and prevention, so not only is vaping and e-cigarettes taught just in terms of what it is, but also the influences that go around some of the decisions that students may make is in eighth grade, along with alcohol, marijuana, and tobacco. So prior to that even coming up to surface, it was just tobacco. But now that we know, and really what's even more important to understand, too, is that a skills-based approach that we're having is that, so vaping came up, but now we can easily kind of and seamlessly weave this into our curriculum because the skill of analyzing those influences and the decisions that they're going to make around it, they can make with any of those types of drugs or those risky behaviors that we do see. Just another thing, just to point out within eighth grade really quickly, we do a lesson with students about their perception of use versus the actual use. And it's kind of alarming to understand that the student's perception of what they think the usage is, is a lot higher than the actual national statistics around it. So one of the things that we know is that if we can start to clarify and have students understand the perception of use is not really, that perception of use is the influence that could be driving an overall decision that they make later, but if we lower their perception of use, we're automatically going to lower the actual usage. And the actual usage is really not that high nationwide. So it is, it is some things, yeah, that we're teaching in eighth grade, but as we're having these conversations, we know that this could be something that they could start to be learning in sixth grade, absolutely, to start to be introduced to some of those risky behaviors that we see.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Penny?
With so many neighboring states legalizing marijuana and there being edibles at marijuana, at what point, if at all, are you introducing the concept of that into the curriculum?
So again, eighth grade is drug awareness and prevention, so marijuana is a part of that unit within a few lessons that students learn, not only just about the effects of marijuana negatively on the body, but also some of the overall legal aspects of what is happening within our country marijuana. Because again, seeing that out there, that it's becoming legal, sometimes gives students the false perception that it's okay. So this is, are certain things that we need to clarify and kind of what are those influences around them? And then as we kind of go through some of those external influences, what are the positive and the negative outcomes of that? So we have students also develop what is now just kind of done a web of influence. So if you put one of those drugs in the middle and they come out with some of the external and internal influences around that web, and then they develop what are, is this a positive influence or a negative influence in the media, for instance, or my family being a positive influence and so on? So they start to see these certain all influences that when it's put out on a web like that, they're able to kind of internalize that and kind of see it a little bit more, where they might not actually be realizing that this is influencing them in a negative way. So this is also still taught in eighth grade, but again, we can see this being taught at a younger grade right now.
Sherry?
I also just want to, I have to echo that this work is so important, and I adore the happiness wall. I mean, that's amazing. So that, this is just so important, and that video, like, even though there were a couple kids that really looked like they did not want to be there singing that song, you never know, like, which kid up there is at some point going to come back to that framework and because of that framework make a good decision, so thank you. My question is, so we see in both Connecticut and nationally, statistics that show us that for teens, anxiety, depression rates are going up, eating disorders are going up, but at the same time, we see numbers that show, like, in Connecticut, only four percent of teen girls feel comfortable talking to a teacher or counselor or parent when they're feeling sad or anxious. So I'd just be curious in hearing, how do we, through the health curriculum, encourage students that it's okay to ask for help, or it's, how do we inform them where they can go when they need resources?
So just on the mental and emotional health, we started to roll out also in seventh grade, so taking students just through certain stress management techniques that they have, guided visualization, as well as understanding, again, some of the influences around some of those stressors that might be out there. But also to your question, in third, fourth, and fifth grade now, we've, and what I mentioned back in April, was that students are learning their trust circle. So, and what that really is, is adults in their life that they can go to when they're feeling the things that you're mentioning. And they identify more than one, they identify about five or so. And as they kind of see that, and they, it becomes a really nice diagram for them and a good visual as well to recognize who they are, but yet we go to in the home, school, and community. So it's not just who are those adults in your home, but who are those adults in school? Sometimes even, you know, some of, as we debrief about some of the lessons that we give, and the health teacher standing right over them doing this activity, sometimes we don't even see ourselves in that circle, but because maybe we're not with them all the time, but yet we reinforce that, you know, teachers are there also, your counselors are there. So it is something that starts to become a little bit more eye-opening to them, too, that as we build those trusting relationships with them, that they have multiple adults that they could go to and that they can also talk to. Some of the other pieces behind accessing valid and reliable information is maybe not just the adults, but maybe how can I find that information out for myself if I needed to find that out there? And we know that presented that back in fifth grade when we saw some of the common sense ways that students need to be healthy, but as they get older, it could go into a little bit more of the sensitive topics that you're mentioning also, in the same way. As they develop that skill of accessing valid and reliable information, well, now it can be around their mental and emotional health as they get into seventh grade and eighth grade and so on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, and I do just want to invite you all to, if you would like, but you don't have to, is Dr. Korenti has offered, as she's giving me an nod, like, oh, yes, I did, to collect the orange Post-its, and we would love to put them up on our happiness wall if you would like to. You can give them to her, and she'll give them to me, and we'd love to put them up there to contribute to that. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And see you soon.
Thank you, everyone.
I thought Dr. Korenti was going to offer to run the marathon.
That's right, good luck getting home.
Should we ask you your time, Jonathan?
So the time was really not that important, but it was-
I agree.
It was four-thirty-eight was my time.
That's not the time, you finished.
But it was my, it was my first marathon and one that I kind of took all in and experienced where I was able to stop and take pictures, so my family in the crowd, and was really able to kind of, you know, take all that in. So it was a, it was a great experience, so.
Inspiration.
That was amazing.
All right. Okay, moving on to action items, and the, first being the public hearing special meeting. And if I could get a motion to approve a special meeting to proceed the next regular Board of Education meeting on November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the subject of school start times, do I have a motion to approve? Katrina? Second, Brendan, all those in favor?
Any dis-
Can I just-
Sure.
Briefly? Thank you. I just wanted to-
In the overselling moment.
Yeah, yeah, I missed my moment there, but that's all right, I'll follow up. Just to make the point, the, you know, this is, in order to provide the public, parents, the community with an opportunity to speak to the board about the ongoing conversation regarding school start times. The focus group that we held about a week and a half ago, I thought was very successful, and many members of the board were there to observe, participate, and to hear. One of the things that we've heard is that folks do want to share their thoughts and feedback with the board, and instead of trying to do it in regular session, we thought the appropriate thing to do would be to set it up as a public hearing prior to the board meeting itself. The board can decide at that, that night around the parameters for the public hearing as far as, you know, the protocol to follow, the amount of time that folks have to share their thoughts, and the overall time for the public hearing itself. We've looked back at some of the public hearings that the board has held in the past. It's been a while, but we've done a couple of them through the years, and there's a range from three to five minutes for comment, and on both of them, it was a forty-five minute maximum for the public hearing itself. And asked for people to sign up in advance prior to coming to the podium and to state their, their name and their address before sharing their feedback with the board. All of that can be decided that evening is at the start of the public hearing, but I wanted to just share that information with you, just to consider between now and then. We felt that the, by making a public hearing, it was a good way for the community to under, to see how seriously and how importantly the public comment is taken by the board and is respected by the board. So to put this time aside, felt would be the right way to provide that forum for this important conversation. Then in the board meeting afterwards, there'll still be the opportunity for public comment as we have on the agenda each time, but we'll also be having the presentation from Mark Walsh, who's the transportation consultant, who will be talking about different scenarios and possibilities and to start the conversation with the board. There's no expectation that a decision would be made that night, but it is an opportunity to begin the conversation, thinking about scenarios, understanding the traffic consultant has done quite a bit of research around it. It's not purely a financial or a transportation decision, you know, and that, which is why I think the public hearing is such an important part of it. Then the board can also talk about, after those scenarios are presented, what's the best way to receive public comment after there, those are out? And it may be to similarly hold another public hearing in the future, or it may be to do it in another venue or another way, and the board can have that discussion as well.
You know, I just, actually, I wanted to ask a question, and maybe, I know this isn't really probably necessarily Robert's rules, but because we're, this is a new thing that we're going to be doing, and I know that there will be parents that are coming out, and they'll be, I think it would be helpful for them to have some sort of parameters in advance so that they can prepare. And so maybe if I could suggest that, you know, people give, send an email to me or to Brian or to both of us, and then the Agenda Planning Committee is going to be meeting next week, so we can discuss it, and then maybe we can make some preliminary decisions around it and then get it out to the community in advance of the meeting instead of voting on it that night, just so that people have an opportunity to prepare for that evening.
Yep, just one quick correction. The group that meets to plan the agenda is actually the executive team of the board, right? It's not a formalized committee.
Right.
But the-
Yes, the executive board.
Yep.
Yes, we don't have to post those meetings.
Well, right, because they are Agenda Planning meetings specifically, not just-
Are we going to give in options that evening? Like, cost options? Is it just travel?
Well, no, so the transportation consultant scenarios that he's still generating, putting together, will include estimates of cost of each of the scenarios. And they are, you'll be getting to, to a very detailed level. And what he's working on now is generating four possible scenarios, given the parameters that they've been given, both through meetings with us, through a deep analysis of our current transportation system, last year's, this year's, looking at the roads, the coverage, the ridership, I mean, he can, he'll go through it all, but it, there are, the scenarios will range in price and cost, and that is an important consideration. But as you know, it's not the only consideration, so that's why it's important to keep the discussion, I think, as holistic as we can is by including different perspectives and things like that, too.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we did, right? Moving on to the second action item, the Board of Education Policy Series Two Thousand, first read. So the Governance Committee has been meeting, and we had a meeting with, that was open to the board to review the policy series two thousand, and Tom, do you want to mention anything before I ask for a motion?
It's not a, it's not a particularly large series, however, we did adopt some new policies, and it's slightly more robust than our existing policies. Take a look at it, if you probably already reviewed it, and as Deanna mentioned, we did meet, some of us as a board and reviewed and made some edits, and those are in red on this present copy. And then we'll have an opportunity to do that again between now and the next, next final read.
All right, so if I could get a motion, this is just the first read, but if I could get a motion for a first read to the newly revised and updated Board of Education Administrative Policy Series Two Thousand, have a motion? Hazel, do I have a second? Penny? We won't vote yet because it's just a first read, but thank you, everyone, and we'll see, it may not be the next meeting, but we'll see.
May not be the-
It may not be the next meeting.
We may wait a meeting, given-
I think we have a large agenda at the next meeting, so maybe it'll be in a couple weeks, so, okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the committee for all the work that they've done. It's a tremendous amount in terms of distilling what we need and reviewing all the possibilities, and it's very much appreciated, at least by me on the board, for all the effort and time, thoughtful time you've been putting out. Okay. Well done.
Just so everybody knows, it's Katrina and Tom and myself. Poor Katrina doesn't, yeah, well. You've been very involved, so, and Penny is very good about, you know, giving us her, yes, so it's great. All right. Thank you, everyone. We have one more agenda item, and that would be the motion to approve a donation from the New Canaan All Sports Booster Club in the amount of thirty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents, and this will be for fall coaches. Do I have a motion to approve? Brendan, second. Sherry, all those in favor? Brendan, second, Sherry, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. All right, and I see no public, so we will move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Lettsi?
Sure thing. First, of course, I know I speak for the whole board to say thank you for, to the Booster Club, to the All Sports Booster Club for their generosity and this, the thirty-six thousand dollars, the money that was approved tonight helps to staff our coaching, our positions so that we can continue to have so many students participate in all of our activities, so it really makes a big difference. The, of course, it goes without saying or announcing that schools are closed tomorrow for Election Day, of course, we encourage everyone to get out and vote. Our teachers are working, however, we have a professional learning day planned and so they'll be in, working in their buildings, working across their departments and continuing their own professional learning throughout the year. Our next meeting, as we just discussed briefly, will actually begin a little bit early for the election of Board of Education Officers, a public hearing, as we just discussed, the transportation consultant will come, we may or may not have a series two thousand, as we mentioned, and it is the second meeting of the month, so we will have a statement of accounts update. Depending upon the size, the amount of people that are going to be speaking, we'll either be in here for the public hearing or in the auditorium and we'll, we'll try to get a sense of that in advance so that we can decide what the best location is. This is a large enough room generally, so we should be okay, but we'll make that decision from there. The, let's see, anything else? Just to say thank you and congratulations to Ms. Carlson, our chair, this is the, the last full meeting that Ms. Carlson will be running as Chair of the Board of Education and I think I speak for the board to say thank you-
You do.
-for your tireless, thank you for your tireless dedication. As I've said often, one of the things that truly sets New Canaan apart is the quality of the Board of Education and leadership is so important in that and you've done it with dignity, grace, and style for three full years and we're all, I think, very thrilled you're not leaving the board, so you'll still be here, but as you know better than anyone, the role of Chair is, is a very important role and as superintendent, I have, I consider myself lucky and blessed to have had you as a chair for three years, so thank you for your service and I'm glad that you're going to continue as a member of the board and we'll have our elections at our next meeting.
Yes, thank you. Yes, well, it's been an honor and a privilege, so thank you, thank you, everybody. All right, moving on, if I could get a motion to adjourn? Jen?
Every hand goes.
I know, like, second, Brendan, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Oh, Terry. Oh, my goodness. Nice.